I did it, that did it.
Time changed and uh.
You know, that does help, that time change helps. But if you want to do anything after five o'clock, it's dark.
Can we put this on the website?
We can, we need to, needs to go on Facebook.
And they don't have, they don't do that stuff.
No, because their parks are all city.
Okay, it is uh ten o'clock, a little after, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order.
Dear Heavenly Father, we just come to you today and ask that you just be with commissioners as they go through this meeting, Lord. We just be grateful for the community people that came today to hear this court do their work. And Lord, just be with each and every one of us through these next few months of holiday season. And that we just do, hope we do what's pleasing in your eyes, in your name we pray, amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under.
Did you get it? You got it?
That's my recorder.
That's a commitment then. From you. Uh, thank you everybody for coming, we appreciate you being here. Um, at this time, any person with business before the court not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting, these speakers limited to three minutes. Any takers? Alright, thank you. Presentation and discussion of Department head committee and board reports. Looks like the business is going on. Anything need to be discussed in any of these?
I'd like to say something about precinct, should be ready yet?
Not quite, we're at the board reports right now.
People are still speeding through our town, which is a good deal. Maybe not so much for them, but. I don't see anything out over there.
Lots of donations at the senior center. Yes, absolutely, okay. Will approve, consider approval of previous court minutes.
Don't have any of this.
Okay, I didn't think I saw any.
Nope, didn't give them any. We'll get them all for you next.
Alright, thank you. Um, considering a precinct project scheduling staffing. There we go.
There we go now.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'd like to uh first of all, thank uh precinct one for sending Mark over. And uh cleaning our uh under the bridges and uh down to the creeks where he'd run down the bar ditches instead out down the dead blame highway, like he's been doing for years. And uh I thank Sean, his crew for coming and getting a bunch of dirt that we didn't need out of our way where it continued to run down the bar ditches instead out in the highway. He said he could use it and uh so uh we killed about three or four birds there with a stone and a half. So uh I do, I do thank them for, for lending a hand.
You will.
See how it works for tomorrow, tomorrow's supposed to rain.
Oh, we rain for a week or two.
Anything further on it?
Uh, yeah, I would like to mention that uh that precinct two has cut a load of trees. I mean uh uh we're trying to fix it, we're gonna go to glass shop much better than what we've we've got that uh road uh, I think it's two two one, it goes from pond to Rosa all the way around there to the country club. Uh, air a tree out of our way uh on both sides of the road. Uh, and up that way on a lot of dirt roads and uh even on two fifty uh two fifty three, I believe it is. Uh, we've got, that was one thing we were doing along with is uh uh digger is to getting the trees out of the way. So uh uh I, I think that uh, and we've had some of their hands helping do it on that stuff too, so uh I sure appreciate all of everyone at the park.
Yeah, you do.
And I believe that's all right now.
What do y'all do with the trees and branches and all that?
We had to haul them off, but that's better than hauling them off in the back end of one of them glass uh graders or, or loaders.
Yes, do we, do we still have the chipper?
Yes.
And is it, is it where it can go out to the golf course?
Oh, yeah.
And so we can chip out there and then give people the chips? So you can do that if you want to sometime?
Well, the thing about it is.
You probably already hauled it now.
We've already hauled it, plus the fact uh, you know, you can, most of the time, and the pastors wouldn't throw it over.
Okay.
And you get somebody's field, they might look ugly on you. They don't, that stuff don't grow, so I don't think they want it in the field, but we've been able to get rid of a, a bunch of it and uh you know, it, it's, it's just ideal that uh it would just, I mean, every time we go out, we're breaking glass. And so uh uh we're gonna have to do something or go to the bank.
And just, just for your information, the chipper is always available and it's not only available.
Matter of fact, I think we've got it.
Take it with, okay. You can take it with you and chip it right there on the spot if you, and, and you can give those chips to the community because that chipper actually was gotten for the county through a grant. And that grant stipulated that the public would be able to use the chips or whatever that was, came from that, or even set it up where they could use it in a storm after storm? Or they could use it to chip their own stuff?
No. If they wanted to come out there and.
And we set it up out at the golf course and we've also done at one time, Larry had it set up there at the ball field.
Let's don't even mention. The east end of the park.
Just say park.
East end of the park.
Okay.
Control burn after the farm. It's gonna get me, all them, all them trees. Old, high line pole. When it snows about a foot or two. There you go, after we get through our burn, burn bin.
With the fires we've had in precinct one out at the north edge there of Hutton Avenue, we don't, we don't want a spark going in, I imagine.
Y'all have been having several.
We certainly have.
I would like to mention one other thing. Uh, we got our truck back from according to Dale, uh from the college. Uh, they've still got our trailer.
Okay.
So I think probably uh as long as we let them use that trailer, we can still stick somebody in that school over there.
Okay.
And that's the only way to go anymore, I don't, didn't think much of schools, never did.
Right.
But uh, that one's a good one.
Okay.
They can get you in and get you out and you'll pass, so.
Good, so they, they bought their own truck then?
That's what I'm understanding from Dale, that they told him they'd bought one, and I think he's already got the roof truck back.
Okay.
If I understood him right.
Yeah, there's a different truck out there.
Okay.
There is.
Different truck out there.
That's good.
Well, there's, as long as, as long as we can go get it, uh if we need to haul something, it's just uh uh that haul trailer we got off you is what they're using, so uh you know, we'll be able to go get it when we need it and then they can still keep a bobbing when I do that by morning.
Alright, we'll move on to consider accepting donations to county entities. Donations to, need to accept. Are we doing all of them or just the senior centers?
All of them, uh because she just put on there.
Gotcha, okay.
County entities, so we're just doing all.
Okay, so we have uh those to the senior center, which is total of three thousand twenty-two dollars. We have uh.
I have the total of this right now, for the um donations from anonymous donor, Muscle White, Digby Construction, and another anonymous donor for Christmas decorations in amount of ten thousand sixty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents.
It is, and that is uh, that is fantastic. Our community would be willing to come together and make those donations to us to do what we've done at the courthouse this year. Uh, they're not complete, but they will be uh before the end of the weekend, I think there's gonna be a lighting on
Sunday.
Sunday evening at six and uh see what the generosity of the community will do, but there is uh, we need to really thank the anonymous donors, Muscle White and Digby Construction for, for putting that money out there for us.
Yeah, Muscle White has been here since time.
Yes.
Uh, I went in oil field when I was eighteen and they had been here way before that.
Yes.
And I'm pretty doggone old and uh uh it's, they, they've uh I don't know whether this is a first or second or tenth time they've done this, but they've done other things that's, that's helped this uh town.
Yeah.
So I, I really thank they, there's just not that many independent oil field companies anymore.
Right, especially that have been around that long.
That's right, there is uh, uh so I, I think we, we really owe them our gratitude for what they've done, and dig them too.
We will be running uh an ad in the newspaper thinking the sponsor.
That's, that's what I was thinking about, just the need to do that.
Right, for sure.
I might motion we accept all the donations.
Alright, all in favor? Can we put this on the webpage and on the Facebook page showing? Uh, consider approval of third quarter treasures report.
Um, we ended the third quarter uh with a cash total uh balance of nine million, three hundred and forty-five thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty cent, eighty-seven cents of all of our accounts. Interest earned was uh for the third quarter was sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and one dollars and four cents. Compared to the last quarter of interest uh earned of eighty-five thousand, six seventy-two, fifty-five. We had a net loss of interest uh from the third quarter to the, uh from the second quarter to the third quarter of twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty-one cents. Uh, our year-to-date interest total is two hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety-six cents. And compared to a year ago, um, a year ago, it was a hundred and forty-four thousand for eighteen fifty-one. So that was an increase by ninety-nine thousand five sixty-one forty-four from last year's year-to-date.
Okay.
We, we compare our investment um interest rates to the average day, ninety, ninety-day T bill. And Texpool right now through October was um, or through August, uh September, sorry, uh was earning two point one six three five percent. At Texas class, it's earning two point two percent. And FICA were earning one point eight seven percent. The average day ninety, or average ninety-day T bill that we compare it to is one point eight four percent. So our interest is a little bit better than the average day ninety-day T bill.
Okay, um, you mentioned that uh it's down from the last quarter, what would cause that?
But our balance is, also, also our balance is
Is higher.
Lower.
Our balance, I gotcha, okay.
For September.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay.
Once we start receiving, which for next year.
Tax payments.
It'll be included in the fourth quarter when I first send that, so maybe it will go up.
Sure.
We've had to transfer some money out of our general.
Yeah.
And rent a bridge.
And then we interest in sinking when we made our payment.
Interest would do.
So that's why it's down.
Okay.
So we haven't received the first um progress paid in advance, cover here, we received that yesterday.
So we're not losing money, we just didn't gain as much in interest as we did the last quarter. Okay, because of those factors, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
And I submit for y'all's approval, any, any other questions, but.
Keep the money coming.
Yeah. Keep the interest rates up.
Yeah, well, those way too bad, considering, I'd like to motion we approve the third quarter treasures report.
All in favor? Court to consider resolution to elect members to the appraisal district board of directors. We nominated Fred Cross. The candidates are Ronnie Anderson, Jerry Boyd, Fred Cross, Clarence Speaker, and Jay Waller. And form votes cast is one thousand seventy-seven point two eight.
Resolution to make like the.
All in favor? Court to consider, discuss and consider bid on tax deed and property card for trust property in the city of Snyder. This is lot twelve and block fourteen of the Boothland in addition to the city of Snyder. Doesn't have the actual physical address, but that's legal description and it's sold for five hundred dollars if we accept that. It'll be back on the tax rolls.
Is it on Peyton Avenue?
That's the um, that's who the owners are. They, they live at Peyton Avenue.
It is on the backside of it.
It on the backside?
I think it must be a lot next to him.
I'm making motion that we accept on tax deed and property card for trust property in the city of Snyder, as presented.
Alright, all in favor? And it is on Peyton Avenue, on the backside of it. Court to consider certification of additional revenues in the form of proceeds from Digby Construction for Christmas decorations.
We, I'm sorry, find the revenue of.
Yes, ma'am.
Four thousand five dollars.
Okay.
For Christmas decoration donation.
We can go ahead and do the other one as well.
And the other one is from Muscle White for fifteen hundred dollars, also for Christmas decorations, decorations for Christmas. Then we're going to do the prisoner keep as well?
Yes, ma'am, let's go ahead.
The prisoner keep total is forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars that I'm certified by today. And that's to prisoner keep.
Motion that we certify additional revenues in the form of proceeds from Muscle White, Digby Construction, and for additional revenues from prisoner keep. Thanks, Jeff.
All in favor?
I gave him last one, I'll give you.
Okay, line item transfers and budget amendments.
Okay, I have one line on in print for this time, it is for the county clerk. Um, hundred and fifty into our part-time line, five hundred into communications, from elections and records. Uh, pay early voting worker and the line on that she had did, did product earlier in the year wasn't enough. And then I have um budget amendments, if you will, let me go ahead and go through those. The first one is courthouse security budget amendment for two thousand, two hundred and forty dollars to cover the courthouse security line. Um, and that comes out courthouse security fund, which is collected from fines and fees that are collected at kind of clerks, the JPs, the district clerks. All of those type of offices. Um, the second one is non-departamental, the forty-four thousand, fifty dollars from Digby are putting into the maintenance and repair line to cover cost of decorations. The next one is also non-departamental for fifteen hundred from Muscle White is going into the forty-five hundred to cover cost of decorations. And then the final budget amendment is from EMS, um, and it's going into equipment over five thousand, it's nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventeen cents to place the money into the budget from grants, cover the expenses for Ambu Man, Advanced Mannequin from county nine-one-one grant funds. His grant funds were nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars, so it's placing that into that line so he can buy a mannequin.
You can just take credit. It's quick connection. It's okay, it's okay. I'm making motion to approve line item transfer budget amendments as presented.
Thank you.
All in favor? Count's payable.
Count's payable, from last court through this court, including payroll, is one million, ten thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Okay, I did notice in the health payable, there were two funerals, I don't know if everybody realizes, we pay for indigent funerals, fifteen hundred dollars a piece. And we pay for travel for people to go to the doctor's office and stuff like that.
Also, we, if there is an intime death and uh we pay for the autopsy.
Pay for the autopsy.
What the circumstances, it could be an in-depth autopsy, it could cost even more, you have to travel as taking the body over there, it's just really, it's a lot.
It gets costly.
Yes.
It is, it really is, yeah. I just wanted to throw that out there, because I noticed that, we have two of them.
Yeah, you know, anytime you see the JPs, when they line item transfer, maybe even a budget amendment, it's usually due to autopsies.
Sure, yeah, this one was actually in the welfare, welfare office is where we pay for the funeral. So.
I'll make the motion to pay the bills.
All in favor? Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, everyone, appreciate you guys.
Y'all recognize that signature place?
That was fast for a regular meeting.
I didn't bring my Thursday today.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
I'll go this way, I'm going this way with one, I need autographs on that.
Sid Wiggins, baby.
Looks like Sid Wiggins signature to me.
It's probably right.
I'll see if I can read it, I probably can't read Google.
How are you doing?
I don't know how you get that, but yeah.
You know, the cemetery was donating lots.
I think you got that.
Well, I know.
Thank you for coming, we appreciate you.
I think that fifteen hundred is just for the uh, for cremation, an indigent, it's just a cremation.
A few years ago, and I do know this to be fact, because I was president of the cemetery association, we made an agreement with the county that y'all help us with roads and cemetery. And, and we donated, if you have someone that you had to bury, we would donate lots that he'll pass that back. So I was just wanting to make sure that was still.
Yes, I.
I'll have to talk to Troy and make sure that that's still going on. I would assume it was, because I would think that the welfare office would. Say something about that.
Decide how many votes we're gonna give each. I think last year we gave all five to Fred.
So I, I'm sure that, I'll ask Troy and then.
That's what I think, there's a lot, we're allowed five votes, so I think that's where we have to think. Put them all on threads and see if there's a nominee.
I figured I'd say, how, how fine is that?
Yeah, I don't have a clue to who's signature that is, certainly not any of my guys.
Yeah.
Somebody needs to sign their name over there.
I didn't look at it very closely, at what did they buy?
Battery.
I find batteries, that could be. Eight ninety-nine. That's not too much. Somebody to bring around with both of their, actually sample.
Yeah. Something I'd like to do is put a department, oh, did you already tell us? Yes, you did. Alright, you all have a good rest of the week.
You too.
Because her sister-in-law is actually very, very sick.
Oh, really?
Yeah, she's in other hospitals, that makes sense.
But she's okay?
That Nelson's wife, that's what I figured.
Well, she asked me and she was bound.
He'd, he signing yours? Yeah.
I did?
Yeah, go ahead, we'll change, we'll fix it.
I swear I'm losing what little mind I probably had.
I'm not saying a word. Yeah, once y'all get, I think, all it lacks is me.
Thank you.
Short and sweet, too, boy.
More than.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't give that. Don't like she, she's on the website.
Yeah. I'll make sure. Think Angela was gonna put it on there. She don't make that one page big enough for my long name.
You didn't recognize the signature on here. I'm trying to figure out whose signature that is on the bottom there. I just know it, I don't know whose it is, but I don't, I hope it's not my guy's, but same. I just know it, I don't know whose it is, but I don't, I know it's not my guy's, but same.
What would it be? Where's acetylene battery?
Down on the bottom.
Well, I know it, but what? What would they be doing it for the golf course for?
Maybe a flashlight? I don't know. One of those hydrometers or not a hydrometer, it's whatever they use to check for the moisture and stuff, I guess. I don't know. Probably got an electronic hydrometer maybe?
I mean, no. Oh, this, somebody just charged it to the golf course.
Well, the auditor is trying to figure out whose it is because the golf course says it's not theirs.
Okay.
But the auditor thinks that that's Sid's signature.
Well, I got a bunch of fellows out there that don't know how to write. I can promise you that.
Maybe one of those would recognize.
I have never seen Dale. If, if he didn't put a D there, there's no way in hell I could do.
What it is.
What his name is. And
You need to make him print.
Larry does fairly decent. But there's another or two, you know, chicken scratching. My, my teacher's second grade slapped my hands for that. She did.
I don't doubt.
She did. Hey, hey, the way you write, what I was doing, I was doing this. And then I get around here and I pick it up. I move around here. She said, you don't pick it up. You, you're supposed to make a one continue to do. But I can't that don't look like a D, does it?
No, it don't to me.
Looks like a C.
It does to me too. I, I don't have a clue.
I hadn't got anybody.
Unless he picked it up.
Besides me that's got a C. Well, why are we supposed to do it there?
I'll just, mainly just to find out if anyone knew whose signature that was.
Dollar each, well, hell, I'd pay for it just to get it.
They did, if they find out that you'll do that, they'll get a bunch of them. That's bad.
Yeah.
You're right. Yes, sir.
Well, I, I don't know, I had a line item transfer, but I didn't, I mean, I did.
No, or they didn't get it in.
Yeah, maybe what the problem is.
Have a good one.
You think, yeah. I didn't wear a hat up here. Okay.